Call the meeting is a Franklin Township Board of Trustees regular meeting on April 18th at 12:00 PM to order. And we'd like to ask Mr. Fleishman if he would open us in prayer.
Dear heavenly holidays, thank you for this day and Lord as we come to the will of the township, I ask that you're with us. And Lord remember Israel and the way the lay of the world that everyone just seems to be in an uproar. We ask for calm and peace and to you we pray.
Amen.
And we use.
Nice to meet you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Watson, will you please give us a roll call?
Jim?
Uh, yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Fleishman, um, would you attend to the quote on?
Uh, sure. First we have Susan, is it Boyd?
And she wanted to, she wanted to.
She's a.
So we've, we do not have that. And then what about Sam?
He came here. Sam, you're up. We're, we're doing now.
Oh, okay.
We have changed public comment. So you have three minutes and they run the clock up there.
My, my several years I had a claim about the tall grass behind my house.
Okay.
Last year I've never been told or done at all. And I told you and some of the others to get on it, get something done. Numerous lies have been told to me. Is it going to be that way again this year?
So what is, what is this? So you're not familiar either, John?
I'm not.
So on Geneva, the, you know, when you guys gave that property in the, what was behind the houses years ago?
Okay.
Sam came in that his neighbor behind him is not cutting his grass the entire summer.
Okay.
When Mr. Stevens addressed it, he said they can't get access to get into there. Mr. Youngman says they can come through the back of his house.
Okay.
And it never was taken care of the entire year last year. And so he called me last night and wanted to know what time the meeting was and I said when it is and he's came to ask that.
What's that address, Sam?
I think it was eight ninety-three.
Would that be Wilson O?
That'd be on Wilson Avenue.
What's your address directly behind you? Wilson Avenue, now, now they want your address.
Oh, eight seven O Geneva.
So are you going to check with Stevens?
Oh, I'll handle Stevens.
Never was cut one time last year.
I will get, I will get with Mr. Stevens and, and get him over there and I will come with him.
I was told that, you know, we couldn't get some back there because of cars.
It didn't agree with me.
That you make people move their cars.
We'll, we'll, we'll take it, we'll take it, we'll have it taken care of.
So if we could.
We'll look at it.
You follow up, you have.
I will happily work with Sam through you guys, but I mean, if that's what you want to do.
Yes.
I'll be the guy that gets back to you. Jim will get with, uh, road superintendent, get with me and then I'll get back with you with an answer. How's that, since we live, uh, close?
Can there be some type of ruling or that law to be made that people have to cut their grass at least once a month?
Yeah, we're working on that, we're working on that, Sam. We're going, we're talking about a thing called home rule. So it's in the works.
So where?
And House of Fifty also takes care of it, so.
So Sam, this November on the ballot, we're going to ask voters to, that, we're going to ask them for home rule to yes and no.
Eight nine five.
If we're home rule, we have the, as an agency, we can't add new laws or, or anything like that. We can act on it versus saying, well, the county has to handle it. We can handle more in our township if we were called limited home rule. So we have to put it on the ballot and the people of the township have to say, yes, I agree to that. Because right now we do not have the capability or the, the legal aspect to do anything other than turn it over to the county. So a lot of times when people have cars and stuff, when we find out about it, we just have to call the county and have a code enforcement agency come out. If we're home rule, we can do it ourself and we can act on ourself. So we're going to put that on the ballot so you know what that is. But if for some reason this doesn't get done, come back to the meeting so that we know.
Okay, like I said, I talked to you guys for the last several years and nothing has ever get done.
Okay, well, let's make sure this is the year.
I promise you, you're going to at least hear back from me personally.
Talking out.
And you know, and I will check in with you frequently, okay? All right, sir.
And the only thing that we may have to wait is how wet it gets in there, you know, so that nothing gets stuck in there.
I will make sure Jim Stevens stops by and talks to you.
Well, the house beside me, uh, behind that house, it gets flooded back there.
Yeah.
I admit that it's a little area back there.
Yeah, yeah. I knew it was low in that area.
Normally during the summer and all this, it never gets tough.
Well, this will be a new summer.
I will make sure, I will make sure Jim Stevens comes and talks to you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the agenda, Patty Spencer from Southwest Area Commission, what do you have for us today?
Oh, my gosh, the city's ramping up, it's over summer. Uh, first off, I see you've got that from, uh, last night. Um, I was there at the Roundabout View. There were several, um, township members there, um, some city members. It's going to happen, the best we can do with all of our comments possibly is just get it tweaked. But it's going to happen.
I had spoken to Brad Foster this week on it.
How do you tweak a roundabout?
Don't put it in. There's, there's some, not necessarily the roundabout itself, but maybe some things surrounding it. One of my questions was Frank Road is a forty-five mile an hour road, which means people are going fifty, sixty, sixty-five.
At each.
At the, at least. How are they, where are you going to put the signs? Are you putting signs? Are you putting flashing lights to slow people down before they hit the first one?
No.
I'm, I'm sure they've taken all that into consideration.
No.
They haven't, they said they hadn't.
No.
I'm sure they will.
They will, hopefully now, but anyway, um, it was interesting. Whether or not they give anybody another formal meeting, I don't know. So, City of Columbus, they are ramping everything up. Under Health and Safety, uh, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month and I have information here. You want to become a foster parent or learn more about how to prevent child abuse. Uh, National Volunteer Week, April twenty-first through April twenty-seventh. If you want to look for ways to give back to your community, I, there's a link here, um, for volunteer opportunity. Um, there is a free event on April twenty-third in Dublin for car seat cha, uh, safety checks. Um, if you're looking for help in feeding your fur baby, there is, um, a link here for Low Cost Animal Resources. Um, Harm Reduction Vending Machines. Um, they are going to be putting new and free vending machines across Columbus, offering free products that can reduce drug overdose deaths and the spread of sexually transmitted diseases. Um, I've got a list of addresses where those are going to be placed. Uh, Housing and Utilities, Down payment assistance. Um, this is mostly for Columbus, Columbus everybody, for low income and middle income and first-time home buyers, uh, to get a loan amount, um, for some assistance. Um, and that started March first and there's a link, link, information for that. Transportation and Employment, there is, um, an opportunity, uh, for a bike rental if you are a bike rider and want to go that route. Uh, Operation Taillight Program, uh, they repair, um, brake lights, headlights, turn signals. Um, and there is information on that if you need help with that. Um, the upcoming city event is a free jazz concert, um, April twenty-fifth at the Parsons Branch Library. So that's the fact. Then on April twenty-sixth, there is what they call an Impact Reentry Resource Fair. And that is for, um, people who are previously incarcerated and trying to get themselves back on track. So I've got a flyer for that with information. Uh, there is a Caregivers Retreat, April twenty-seventh at Nationwide Children's Hospital, um, for community caregivers. Um, for information and it's a free event. Um, a Community Health Fair, which is different, also Saturday, April twenty-seven. Um, at, uh, Woodland Christian Church, um, and it's just another outreach available. And then, um, tree planting. If you have, um, tree planting, you're interested, you can also, this is Sunday, the twenty-eighth. Um, they can help you with your tree planting. That's it.
All right, thank you Patty, appreciate it.
I will get this to you.
Duffy Atkins in here?
I saw him.
I saw him, but I don't think I, I, all right, we'll move him down, he might have got a caller. Um, update, um, Shaker's Property Update. Who would like to take the lead on that? All right.
Hi, my name's Don Wood and, uh, my lovely partner Susan Volk is a trustee for this property.
Okay.
Uh, I will explain to it because I'm an accountant, what that means. Uh, the property is owned by Georgesville Inc. And the shares of that, uh, have passed to the trust upon Susan's mother's passing a year ago this summer.
Okay.
Okay, so, so it's controlled by the trust. Anyways, uh, it was being rented, uh, by Spencer Caitlin Campbell and a beautiful business and successful business was running out of there. And so unfortunately, there was a fire. So I want to tell you how we feel about this property before I delve into what you really want to know, okay? Uh, Susan and I are, uh, from this area, both Wesleyan graduates, seventy-nine.
I think so.
I remember when the mall turned into a mall, okay?
Hey, you don't have to hurt.
Um, we. Remember, I remember my parents taking us to eat there when it was Lums.
All right, sir.
I was ten, eleven years old, I can still see the inside of Lums, okay? After Lums went out of business, uh, it became Boot Hill Saloon. Some of the details of that I do not know, but even though I was not a family member in that then, I am now. And so I remember a lot of things, but when it was a Boot Hill Saloon, my first wife and I would take our children in there and it was a wonderful, wonderful place to go eat. So Susan's mom ran that business, we're not sure for how long, uh, fifteen to twenty years. Well, in nineteen ninety-eight, she purchased the building, okay, after having ran that business for a long time. And, uh, her mother's name was Dixie McClaskey, all right? Anyways, uh, she changed the name of it when she bought the building to Shannon's Puff, her first grandson, okay? Uh, this property means a lot to the family, okay? And Dixie stopped running the business and became a landlord. And so, uh, after, uh, Jumbo Motors went out of business, it hurt the business over there, it really shook it. So it went through different proprietors, some of you guys may know some of those names, I know some of them. Uh, but anyways, it got changed at some point to Shakers Public House. And I think that's when, uh, John Burns, uh, started running that business over there. And he was kind of running the business, but he had other interests and so he had people running the actual bar itself. Anyways, uh, then Spencer Caitlin came in and worked with John for, I don't know, a year or two and then they took over the business and had a lease with, with this. And then she passed and then they had it transferred to the, to the trust and then it, then it burnt down. All right, so the point I want you to know is we care about this property. We care about this community, okay? We care about the future of what's going on. And I've brought four of six investors that are talking to me currently about this. And we don't want you guys to make any rash decisions to, uh, condemn this building. We, we are active with it, uh, you know, we patrol it, whatever that means. Uh, we have gone over and spent over five thousand dollars in safeguarding it, okay? Um, the first go-around, they did a horrible job, you know? Uh, my, my littlest granddaughter could have gotten in it so bad, okay? So we went over personally, spent more money and got, you know, one inch thick plywood, the most expensive plywood you can get and fortified it. So that is fortified again. And, you know, we have these gentlemen who are interested, gentleman and lady, who's interested and in negotiations to talk about it. It would be really bad for everybody that's interested in this property to condemn it because you have to start over. It will be bad for the community because you're going to lose tax base, okay? The taxes are current on it, we keep them current and we will continue to keep them until we get this transitioned. We only recently received a settlement this month for the fire. So I, I think we're seven months into this and we are actively trying to get it rebuilt. We brought investors in to help in this process. The path that that leads to, we do not know. But we have, uh, accidentally found out you guys were talking about it today and we didn't know. And so we're here to tell you that we're here, we care and, you know, steer you away from condemning it because that's going to be bad for everybody. There, there's not one investor that says, well, we bulldozed this down. And we've looked into it, you know, we've, we've researched that effort. We, we know what that end result is and how to get there. But that's not the direction this needs to take. This needs to get an investor to help to rebuild this and bring it back. And so these guys are, are uniquely in, adjoined in the same direction of that. So I, I, I don't know what you guys want to do, but I would like to let Susan say about two minutes or something and then each of the investors to say something to you and then I can come back and you can ask me questions.
First of all, what, what, what do you think the timeline is of getting something? I mean, to see work progress, starting to be progressed there.
There's, honestly, you, you, if you want me to make up a number, I'm an accountant, I can make up numbers.
Rather have a true number.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a true number.
So it could be six months, it could be a year and a half.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and, and that would, that would be a reasonable timeline considering the course of what has to be done. I don't think I have to tell you what needs to be done, but the investors have to be settled in. The, you know, the, you know, architects and engineers will have to be brought in. The roof is going to be the first thing that, that needs to be addressed.
I, I think I can speak for, for the board here and by saying this, and they'll correct me if I'm wrong, but the last thing this board ever wants to do is condemn a property. Um, it, it's, it's no matter what reason, but sometimes when we can't get a response from the board and can't get, don't see progress and don't under, don't know what's going on, there's no communications, we, we're left with one choice. But now that you're making some communications, that's all we'd ask is if you would stay in contact with us and say, and maybe put some signs up so that other businesses in the area knows and stops calling us going, hey, what are you going to do with this property? What, this new business property, this new business property. You know, remodeling, new, new, something new coming, some kind of sign like that out front that, that would show. And make sure the building's secure because otherwise i- if, if you're not, if it's not, not telling you how to do your business, but if you look two doors down at the Pond.
Pond Rosa.
Pond Rosa, it wasn't secure and they're left with sticks and that's kinda, it's not your guys' fault, but that's kind of become an eyesore and a lot of businesses are going, hey, you got Pond Rosa, hey, you got the, the old, um, I keep wanting to call Shannon, Shakers, um, you know, what, what are we doing here? So that's, that's where, that's where the board was taking that approach, but I mean, like I said, I don't think the board wants to condemn. I, I, none of us wants to condemn a property.
I, I honestly think though, looking at the damage of it, it would be, in my opinion, is if I was an investor, I'd want to clean slate and, and start up with. Every time you go into something that you have a situation, Chief, how bad, burnt, you've been through that?
Uh, it's significant damage, but I'm not a architect or.
I'm sure you got an architect.
I have lots of sold considerable amount of real estate. Um, all the investors have inspected it and the united consensus is do not tear it down. This is, it, it's very strong, I, I'm not saying it's perfect, but the, the roof is, is, is where all the damage is. Now the vandals have torn up the porches, you know, you hate to see that, um, but all of us can see past that and what it takes to fix that, that's, that's not the big deal. The biggest deal is first the roof and, and then the second one is. You'll have to go in and, you know, gut out the kitchen area there and then start over again. You know, it'd just be a fresh start in there and then do that. Uh, I see no, you know, blockages, except if you guys, you know, condemning it, that would, that would, that would be a, a negative thing.
I've got a question. But I'm just new as a trustee, four months, but I've heard in the past when there's been fires like Pond Rosa, you said you got a check from the insurance company?
No, this was a different, this, they're not.
He just said.
That's two different properties.
No, no, I, I, I said that.
Oh, okay.
We just, we, we just, we just got a check from the insurance company.
And I'm, I'm sorry.
But the, the problem is, here's the cost, here's the money, okay?
Yeah.
And life happens and, and that's not surprising. And, and that is why investors need to come in to, to start and, and get this project going. Because we care that the property remains.
But.
I highlighted that to you and there's not one of these investors and these guys are against each other. It's not a comfortable situation for me, it's not a comfortable situation for them. But I asked them and told them, I said, we need to show a presence down here that we care.
So if I may, who was the insurance company on this?
Tough questions.
Western World, yes, yes, Western World.
And did they pay that off as a, a complete, a complete loss?
Yes, they did.
Yes.
Yes. But, but I'm going.
Hold on just a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
On that same line, we have been given checks from insurance companies on burnt out properties like that. My question was going, are we not eligible for that? Why did a check not come, or not? Okay, that's good enough for me, you're the chief and so go ahead, sir, it means you cut you off.
I don't think you remembered what I was saying.
You were telling us about the loss on the, uh, they would pay it off.
It was a total loss.
The, 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 the shirt value was below the rebuild value.
Yeah, okay.
It, and I guess it's a common thing, but when the trust took over the management of this property in December seventeenth of twenty-two, upon her passing, within maybe two months possibly of that happening, an insurance agent was contacted that had it and they said, there's not enough insurance on here, okay? So they raised it to this value, but they only insured it for eighty percent of it, okay? And so a total loss, you, you don't have enough money to rebuild it. I'm not an insurance guy, I'm an accountant. I don't understand why, if it takes this much to build it, why you wouldn't say, customer, you, you need to get this much cash value out of it to rebuild it. I, I don't understand that. And, and commercial real estate is even different than residential, which is what I own, okay? But I've never had a burnout before, so.
I have, I have a question. If, if say we give you ninety days, can you come back in ninety days and tell us where you're at?
I will come back as often as you need me.
Yeah. I personally, as much as we've worked on this and trying to reach out and trying to get something.
I, I would disagree with you.
If I could speak, please.
I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
To the board. We know what's going in, in and around the area, the millions of dollars that is being invested less than a mile away. We have a building that was built in nineteen, what else?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one, thirty-seven. That is right now condemned, is that not correct, Chief?
I don't think it's been condemned yet.
I think the official letters may have gone out yesterday.
Okay. Okay. We're looking at a situation of taking a building that has, uh, been condemned, official letters have gone out and repairing the building versus, in this situation, clear it, let them build what they want to build, build today's, whatever's going to be there versus is it, you know, we don't have an engineer. I know Bill Tools and them may have looked at it and, and said that it needs to come down. What, we would need to ask legal, if we go against what Bill Tools has already told us, that is hired by us, what legal ramifications could we have, Chief?
I can speak on that. When I spoke to Bill Tool, my understanding was the building was condemned as of yesterday. I think the letters went out either yesterday or today and it's condemned to demolition or repair.
Okay.
So I think the ability to repair it is there, but we have officially condemned it.
What, what, what is the timeline for that?
Hold on, sir. So, uh, James, you said, what, about three months, ninety days?
Right.
John, you're, I heard your opinion.
Right.
And so I was on the lines of, I was going six months, but we would want to, listen, we're just talking.
No, 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 I, I was going to say six months.
We'd have to have a decision, we'd have to have a plan in place. It would have to come in with a death, a date, you understand what I'm trying to say? For me, and we're a board and we're going to vote, eventually we're going to vote on this. So I just wanted to let you know where I stand on it. Um, and we'll, and we have to have the time, we do, I don't know how we do this, do we do it right here, right now?
I, I think it's a reasonable thing. I, I would ask for the six months, I would come in every month and update you where we're at, or I'll come in at the.
But just so all investors and you know that you hear us, six months, I'm just talking for myself now. We have to have a plan in place with a date that's going to get this done and then even at that, we are not, if that date is going to be a year and a half out, you understand what I'm trying to say? It's probably not going to go well.
I, I, I don't want an indefinite date. I, 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 I think we're just premature at saying dates right now.
So I wanted to get out how I felt as a trustee.
Yeah.
I heard James and he, he only just, he probably maybe he should have some more to say on that because he just threw out ninety days and I heard exactly what John was thinking, but so you now know, um, where I'm at, gentlemen.
Sure.
And so it's up to the, uh, your pleasure, what we want to do.
Chairman, if I may, one of the things that we're hearing is, and this is, is very bad for the township. We've got a building that's burned out. We've got a building that's burned out, condemned or repaired, sitting there. We don't know if it's gonna be six months, we don't know if it's gonna be a year. We don't know the finances of the people or what they wanna put in there, which is not for us.
But, we're listening to you.
Let me, I, when we're speaking, yes, please, we'll, we'll call on you, we promise. The problem, the problem is one, are they even gonna get the, we can go down this road for a year and it can sit there. Where, are they gonna have the permits to be able to do what they wanna do? How long are they gonna take when it changes hands to the next person? Does the next person have the cap, the capability and the funding to be able to start this project right away? In eleven years that I've been sitting in this chair, I've seen many of things like this where we end up in a situation where we gave it all a branch and you're already telling us, you don't wanna put a date on it because you don't know. The problem is, is the financing behind this, everybody would like to get this, it's in their mind cheaper to repair it than it is to build new. From the board's perspective and my perspective, this building, we gotta separate ourself from the emotional side to the practicality of the side of, we owe it to the area if this building is gonna sit there X amount of time in a condemned state, which the letters have already went out, that we act accordingly to our schedule, what we were going to be. If we had a, a person come in and they have an architect and they say, this is what we're gonna do, we are starting on this project on June first and the completion date is gonna be this. They, they have the capability, they have the contractor, they have the funding and they're not just gonna try to, to patch something up and put it together. Right now, we have the opportunity afforded us and our decision, do we put, let them patch up what's there and get it open, or do we take it down, make it safe and, and invest or if they wanted to build on it? That's what I'm looking at.
I don't think that's our decision.
That's not our decision to make.
You said, Bill Tools said, demo or repair?
I believe so, yes.
So those are the two things on, these people just found out, they said good faith in what they're saying to me a couple of days ago. And so we haven't even given them an opportunity, in my opinion. So we know where John's at, you know where I'm at?
I, I, I would like to see this and I'll make a motion that we, 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 we allow you time. If you don't wanna go six months. I, I'll say, I was gonna say six months, but I would like to see, I'd like to have you back before that line to, to, like every other month, um, to give us an update of where you're at, because this is a hot topic. Um, but I'd make a motion that we, we, we allow you the time to look into it. The letters just went out yesterday, um, you're, in good faith that you're looking, that you're, you're saying that you was just notified the other day. Mister, we, we'll talk to Mister Bricker about that and, um, we'll probably have him come over. I'm sure you'll be pulling your permits through the, through the county, uh, through the township.
Yes, sir.
Um, so we'll, we'll be updated that way, but, um, I would make a motion that we, we allow you the time and, and that you report back to us in, in two months, tell us where you're at. But we'll give you the six months to have a set plan of saying where, but, you know, let, let's put some signs up. Let, 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 let your, let the neighbors know that, hey, I'm working here.
I, I will have them out there with us.
You know, I can't tell you what to do with your property, but, you know, you might even put a construction fence around it to, to help secure it in, in the meantime. It, it's your property. And for me to sit here to try to tell you, you know, for us, for this board to try to tell you that, you know, it has to be toned down, that, that's, no. We, we don't wanna do that. I mean, that's not our job. Our job is to make sure that the, the business owners can grow in this community also, but, you know, we have, it's sat there for so long, with nothing happening and we hadn't heard anything.
It's been several months and it takes time to go through the thing. Spencer got his check before we got ours.
If you guys could, you know, we gotta have open lines of communication. You know, that might be on us, it might be on you guys, but, you know, let's work it out.
Well, to that end, communications were had, um, and I can't give you the dates, what it could be had. And Chief Todd, they-
Captain Todd.
I'm sorry, Captain, Captain Todd, this is Chief. I spoke to him on the day of the fire, okay? I was, I was there, okay? Susan was there, Spencer and Caitlin were there, and, and so we were there. Spencer has been talking to them throughout this whole process. Captain Todd spoke to the trustee previous to Susan and, uh, things were being discussed. And then Captain Todd spoke with Susan a week and a half ago and he, he mentioned some, some concerns and we told him, we just did that. And we, we, we did it on our own accord and, because we don't want it to look like in our bed. We hate the way it looks. We, our goal is to see to it that it comes back to life better than it was. There's no patching, now I wanna take that away from-
You're right. I said patching picks up, I don't mean it in a negative way.
Well, it's derogatory remarks, um, and, and so I feel that in my heart, because we care about this that much. And so I, I, I will accept that, that your words, that that's not what you meant. But there's no patching this, the, the permits won't allow it, that, you know, if you've ever rebuilt anything in your life, inspectors come through, I, I already explained that the inside will have to be completely redutted and redone. But the structure itself, except for the roof and now the two patios are, are okay, the, the main, the, the, the box is good, except for the lid. So, and, and I told all the investors, that's where we need to start, we gotta get that fixed first and, and, and then it can go from there. These guys have their own plans and their own ideas, if you care to hear that. They have money and they have plans to take this property and bring it back to a restaurant, okay? And that's what all these gentlemen have said.
You, you know, I appreciate, we, we appreciate them coming, but, I mean, the most important thing today is to get the property secure and, and find out where we're going with the property. And I, I think, I think, you know, there's a motion on the table that we, we, we extend to the six months. And, um, with, with, with notification and, um, I'm sorry?
You're gonna do a second and a vote?
Yeah, I will, in just a second. Um, you know, a smarter man than me, Bill Tool, engineer, he, he, he put it down as repairable, I take that as, you know, face value that it's repairable. It is a lot of history, but like Mister Fleishman said, that there's a lot of eyes on this area of town and the sooner we can get it-
Well, I, I challenge you guys to give us the list of their names and I will call them and address it personally, what their concerns are.
No, there's a lot of eyes just in general on, on, on that casino, the mall area, the whole, that whole neighborhood there.
For that same reason, we want the area to repair itself, to, to come back, like I said. It, it, Spencer lives one minute away from there, it's his backyard.
They both have Shakers for a time.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, I see Spencer somewhere.
So before we vote, I wanna add one thing, so to your investors, if you, I appreciate you coming out today. So if in six months, we're going to say, if this passes and in six months you come back, I would invite them to come back, we'll be more prepared for you guys, for each of them.
I think you'll be more prepared.
Let's see some movement on your part.
Yes.
The sign would be a great shero of good space and things like that and everything. And so I'm ready to, uh, continue on.
I would ask a second on the motion.
Okay, so the motion is that we are extending six months-
Six months and they're reporting back.
Okay, and then here's what, only, I, I like the idea, as long as we see something, but we need to have, if they, in six months, they do not have a plan with a timeline, then we need to move forward.
We will, we will move forward with, with the-
Can I make this motion for you?
If you, if you wanna amend the motion and make it, we'll let the first motion die on the table.
Cause it was like this.
Sir, you talked, just, Chairman, you had mentioned, cause I wrote it down, that you want them to report back every other month. Is that what you would like trustees to say?
So what I would like to see is, let me just do this and see if it sounds good.
I will, I will, I will, I will remove my motion from the table.
Being resolved by the Board of Trustees Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board agrees that the owners of Shakers bar slash, uh, lot number-
Georgesville Road Inc.
Georgesville Road Inc. Will be given a six month prior, uh, six months to put together a plan to come back to the township with guidelines of timeframe that this building, what you're gonna do. Also report in monthly as where we are, as well as secure the building.
The building's already been secured.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
And if, and that's pretty much all I have, the signage, if, you know, et cetera. But the, the key part that I want to add to this is the fact that we, at the end of whatever, six months from this day, if we don't have a plan with a full plan from start to finish, then we need to move forward. Does that make sense?
We don't mind that.
Okay, I don't mind that either.
All right, and I would second that motion and, um, Ms. Watkins, can you give us a real call on that?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I would like also to direct you to Mister Mazur.
Mister Mazur.
I'd like for you and the investors to get to know him and talk to him, because we will be having, um, they'll be having some discussions with you on a jet for the area and, um, I think it's very important that you guys get, get involved.
Help, help me out on that. Okay, I know on West Broad Street, there's a, um, a, a jet on West Broad Street. It goes down somewhere around the hospital, I think they're up to Wilson Road, on the sides of the road.
It just goes up to, it goes up to two seventy.
To the freeway.
To the freeway, that's on, per township.
I thought Russell Mall was in it.
No.
We're working currently-
We're, we are currently working on that.
Are you guys Russell Mall?
Yes. And that's why we're, we'll be talking to you about it, cause you're in that area, you'll be in that district.
And I understand that.
Yep.
So to the investors that are sitting here, one of the reasons that I'm really, as you heard me talk, is we, I've sat here and been promised things on properties that we've given time and we've given time. It's like borrow money to your friend. I get paid Friday, I'm gonna leave it at that. But what we're looking at is someone that comes back and that is, you know, we welcome businesses into the township and we're there to help, but if it stays like this for two years, we can't do that. We, and so that's where I'm at, is I need to know a timeframe and, and et cetera. So that's why I am where I'm at on that.
Well, the family slash trust interest are aligned with that.
You need anything else from us today, sir?
Not that I'm aware of. I will get back to you in that happen.
Can you, um, just make, I'll make sure he gets your business card or a copy of it, if he doesn't have one already. But yeah, just, just be in touch with them and I'm sure he'll get in touch with you on the, um, on the jet and, and investors.
Thank you for allowing us so much time and-
Yeah, no, it's important, it's important and, you know, our job. Smart name, Steve Mazur.
M A.
C E O.
Thanks, guys.
I, I respect your, Chairman.
Thank you.
So you can imagine that is next door to you and you had a flag-
But I, I live right around it.
No, no, but I'm just saying.
You guys, just so you know, we've done this in the past with other people, if you wanna stay, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we take no, we take no offense, if you wanna get up and go, we're not going to, uh, we're busy people and everything, so, it's whatever you feel.
Do you guys wanna say anything? Mister Mazur? I'd like to speak to Mister Mazur.
Okay, he'll keep, he'll have a chance to speak to him right after the meeting.
Okay.
Um, Franklin County Sheriff, Deputy Atkins, you have some stuff for us?
Uh, just a quick update, um, been working with Chief here on a couple of different projects, uh, still working on, reaching out to our homeless camps, stuff like that. I'm in talks with Adam H. again, to get liaison come out into the field with me. Uh, when we were working back on Ray Avenue, a couple of things like that, so we are just trying to work with them. Again, my name's Deputy Dan Atkins, I'm a community liaison through the sheriff's office, so if anybody has any needs, wants, questions, requests, we're just here to augment you guys and the guard department you guys have.
Appreciate you. Anyone have any questions, real quick?
Can I make a comment, Jim?
Yeah.
He's doing a heck of a job.
Yes, he is.
Cause he is out there and he is boots on the ground.
Yep, grateful.
You're with Sheriff's Office also, right?
Yes.
You, you have anything for us?
Well, my name is Christina Cologne, I am the Hispanic Latina liaison. Um, I have given the green light to, um, ride with deputies in different townships. So Monday I did my first ride along with a deputy, so I'm going to be connecting with the deputy that's working in this area um, to spend a whole day in the first shift and connect with the community, give them my card, what's going on, how can the sheriff's office help and support, um, not just the Hispanic, but Latino community, any community that's in need of our services.
Appreciate you.
Yep.
Thank you. Moving on, um, Police Department, Chief Smith's on here, so we turn it black, red, blue, high. Hey, I just wanna start off with her, should we?
No.
Do you, do you do translations?
Yes.
We had a meeting out of West, uh, uh, Havenwood and they're looking for a translator, could you get with me?
Sure, I'm not leaving, I'm, I'm gonna stay till the end.
I don't have a whole heck of a lot, I got a few things, one, I wanted to address your issue first.
Nice save.
Your truck's down here?
Yes.
Uh, can you give me a little bit of update on that? That if parking, blocking the view of, uh, on semi-traffic and everything's-
You cannot get out of, uh, Ransburg Avenue and go left. We are unable to see when we come out of there, when those trucks were there and there was a bend in that road. And this has been brought before the board numerous times and the last time it was brought, uh, up to the table, the board had decided that we had talked to them multiple times and got no action and so the board had given a directive to start having tickets from the road.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, just to help the police department out.
Yep.
And, and we talked about it, just-
Yes, we did.
Reminder, uh, for a second, that maybe we consider putting some no parking signs up in front of them.
How we can do that with, uh, with the business?
Being open, I mean, cause it's just like all the pay. This was Dave just approached me in the, um, office there and everything.
Is he parking on the roadway or like, like if he's on the roadway, then we're good.
Yeah.
I'd have to go look at, I don't mind going down and taking, like, taking a real good look and, uh, come back to you guys.
I'll meet you sometime, sure.
Uh, second thing, I kinda touched up with, uh, Steve about, uh, a guy that I was looking at, uh, that we had, we're pretty much just about done with, uh, his background, he had, only has his, uh, physical, which I'm sure he's gonna pass. Uh, and yesterday Chief Gilbert came in, had a visit with me, we were just talking over here in trailer. And he was telling me that, uh, our officer, Tim Myers had applied, which I already knew. And I knew he was just about done with his, uh, background over there. And I even kinda tou- touched on it a little bit with him yesterday about, uh, he might not be able to give us a two-week notice. So what he did was he came in to ask that we please go home against the officer, cause he's probably gonna hear about Friday, which is tomorrow, and then he literally will start Monday. Uh, and he wants to make sure that the responsibility falls back on him or to the sheriff's department and that he doesn't get any, cause there were discussions of not giving a two-week notice. I told him probably would it be an issue with it with you guys, cause it's not his fault. But I wanted you guys to know what I'm dealing with and why I'm standing here saying that. I'm, I was gonna ask to hire this guy at the next meeting, have him here. Uh, I'm just gonna see if maybe if he passes his, uh, uh, his, uh, physical, that we can go ahead and process him.
Has the, have, have you and the chief talked about the new hiring process?
I haven't heard anything about the hiring process.
Okay, they have, before you can hire them, they must meet with the board.
No, I understand it, that's what I'm talking to you right now.
Okay.
I was, I heard that it was just an introduction type of thing.
Oh, no, they will meet with us and we need to see their, see, see what you've got on them.
Okay, then we'll just cancel that one here. Uh, anything else?
Yes, stats.
Uh, I, I don't have, I didn't know I had to bring in stats, I told them at the last meeting for March.
Um, how about, you know, we hear all these stats, um, coming out.
Um, how about, you know, we hear all these stats, um, coming out. Um, can we start getting the stats on citations that we're writing from these, like, traffic stops and different things that, you know? Yeah, we, we have these calls, but what's the end result? Does that make sense?
Quite a bit, quite a bit interacting, talking about eleven hundred. I could have the guys write up something for you guys and give them to you.
I mean, I, I think it's, it, it's a-
They don't have it in our system, I can put it that way, I can't just look up, you know, a matrix and see.
Well, you know how, you know what, you know what the guys are doing on a daily basis or a weekly basis, um, citation wise. You know, X amount of citations this month, something like that. Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I've had a couple of different emails in regards to bus parking on Ray Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
I went over there, Paul, go ahead, I'm sorry. It's okay, no worries. So, in one of the emails that I read, I was kind of like, I felt for the person that said it, because the first thing school says, well, how do you know that it was our bus? Well, obviously, there's a picture. Um, it was-
Yellow?
No, I mean, of course, that's what they're thinking, just 'cause it's yellow doesn't mean it's our bus. Are we able to facilitate, because I can understand the frustration of people that care for that area, and then you gotta deal with the ruts when they leave, and it makes cutting very impossible. And then they tamp down all of the ruts just to have someone come back after it rains. And they're trying to pull off and stage, I get what they're trying to do. They sit there, they're early, if we stage early, we'll be the first one in when it's time. So if we can kind of get an idea of timeframe, and you probably got the same emails, did you not?
Yeah, I drove over past there, I didn't see the bus, but I think-
Go ahead, I sat there for, I don't know, forty-five, fifty minutes in your driveway, um, this past Tuesday, um, watching the buses go in, watching them come out.
I didn't see it stop, I don't think it stopped Tuesday.
It didn't stop that day. Um, so when I left, I turned left out of your driveway and drove down, and I saw a bus parked in the school parking lot then, and I know in your email, you'd said you'd spoke to the school, and that was their concern, wasn't their bus. So has it been back?
It's been back once.
Since Tuesday? So it did yesterday again? Or Wednesday would be yesterday, right? Yes, so, anyway, I saw the ruts, I tried to come over, I was going to, like, I didn't wanna, I know we're shorthanded on police and stuff, and we can't have you sit there for an entire hour and everything, and I did, I had observed the in and out of schoo-, uh, parents dropping their children off and stuff, so I did, I'm assuming you saw me in the drive.
No, I didn't.
And so it's okay, um, but I, I did try to do something about it too, so I, I did-
I seen your response.
I tried to scroll through, can't read the bus number.
But tha- 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 that area too, uh, just like the, the parking on, on Harrisburg Pike and the semi, that area too, we, we, I'm not sure it was communicated down to you and to your officers. It was told to right, no warnings, right, and that includes school buses.
But it's on the opposite side.
Huh?
It's on the opposite side of the signs, and it's in the, not in that timeframe. It's, this one's in the morning.
Maybe we need to put signs on both sides of the road there.
But it's damaged private property.
Yeah.
You know, you can't, it's, it's probably these, I went up there, it's, like, on the other side, they got wood down through there, and blocky, it's going up here, so they're actually, where I'm assuming, 'cause I didn't see the bus, I'm assuming these are the ruts, or right along the road.
Yeah, if you saw the email, the ruts are still there.
Yeah, they were when I went up there.
And if you were a bus driver and you pulled in there, and you saw that one day and you left, and you came back the next day, believe me, you should not pull back in there, you know, your, your piece of equipment's too big to be, and you're tearing up somebody's property.
But that is a good, I think you guys should probably, there's no parking signs there, there's no, right, we're taking it soon.
I don't mean it around, I was gonna say, I'm very familiar with, uh, Southwest from Seacole Desert Transportation, I'll text, I just texted Tim Cox just now about that. And I'm gonna reach out to you of City Columbus. I'll reach out to Columbus, I'm familiar with their transportation department.
Thank you.
So I'll reach out to their deputy director, I think I have his cell phone number, I'm gonna call him and, uh, ask him to start monitoring the buses. All the buses have cameras, I'll ask them to pull the camera if they need to, figure out who it was.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
But I'll get that route.
Yeah, we can get you the footage too.
I'll, I'll, I'll get that.
You know, that's why, that's why we have a great partnership with the Franklin County Sheriff's Department. We can get you the time, we pretty much know what time they were sitting there, so-
I'll, I'll get the route numbers for everybody on the, on the school, then we'll take care of it.
I heard you say there was a, I knew about it, but I heard you say there was another meeting at Havenwood. Can you give us a, a board an update on the meeting?
Yeah, basically, the last meeting that we had over there, it was kind of like what you guys were talking about with this, this, the, the burnout buildings out there. Uh, they had like, uh, what's the lady's name that I told you her name was out there, Steve, that you deal with? The prosecutor with-
Oh, Andrea.
Code enforcement, there's a couple of, there's a city prosecutor for code enforcement and stuff. They're wanting the area cleaned up because it's drawing crime. That was what we talked about this last meeting out at Havenwood.
Was Columbus Police, uh, Department representative?
Yeah, there's Columbus, there's us, and then the Franklin County Sheriff's Department, and their S I T is there. And that meeting's particularly over there this day, was talking about how property, the, 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 the distressed properties in the area will draw crime to, to the, uh, actually, they're talking about the Havenwood, but I mean, it was in the whole area right there, so. That's, that's what they were talking about that last meeting, that's the primary thing they talked about last year.
And are these ongoing monthly?
No, I get emails when they're gonna do it, it'd be a month, sometimes it's two months, uh, so.
I would just like-
We've had some on there.
Yeah, can you let us know when those meetings- You know what I'm trying to say, keep us informed.
Oh, you know, I'd love to have you guys there, one of you guys come, uh, I've-
Well, no, we can take turns heading out there, and let me know when the next one is, give me enough notice, I'll try to make it.
Sure, well.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you. I, I, I will have a reminder for, I do have a reminder for all the department heads, but we were down one. Um, but as discussed in, in the last meeting, resolutions, for now on, you guys will be reading your own resolutions. And if you're not here, they don't get read, just so your departments know.
Yeah, I do want-
Mr. Mazur had asked us to do that, and I think it's a good idea, you guys can answer the questions for the board, so.
Yeah, I do wanna say, I mean, she's right, this guy was out here, we were trampling around in the rain, uh, over that, those cars back there behind your place over there, I mean, and we, I think we removed every car out there, I think.
That's what I heard.
Yep, uh, and he, he was out there helping us out, come out of there muddy as hell that day. Appreciate it, yeah.
Jim, may I make a comment, please?
Yes.
I was, I was gonna mention that, yeah, when I said boots on the ground, he's been out, chief has been out. It's been, yeah, I know you guys are working, and I appreciate it.
Chief Arnold?
I was gonna update you on the Georgesville Road properties, but apparently that's-
You got it.
They took care of that for me, and then, uh, we've just had some great training in the Sears Building at Western Mall.
Sweet.
They're about to tear it down, so this week we spent all morning out there, the last three days, doing some pretty cool training.
I seen you guys over on Hay Avenue, in that house.
Yep.
Doing training over there.
Yep.
You have a question for us?
Yeah. Can you give us an update on the Safer Grant?
Uh, it has been submitted for an extension for three more years for the current grant. So we won't know probably in the past five years, it's been Au- it's been August or later before you get an answer on that, so. But we did submit for an extension for three more years.
That is critical. Thank you. Mr. Stevens is not here, um, he does have a resolution on here, um. I, I was informed that it is a time-sensitive resolution, um, and it's up to, it's up to the board if, if they want, how they feel about it. If they wanna pass it without him being here and reading it, it is a new process, so maybe, maybe we do shed him some, or some lenience on that, so. Am I right in, Steve, does this have to be done? Uh, I believe I've read that this has to be done, or heard that this has to be done by May the second.
It was a tight time, tight timeline, yeah.
And that's why I talked about James about, I feel like, if we either do it today, or we're gonna have to come, our next meeting's May the third. So we're either gonna do it today, or we're gonna have to come together and do it in a special-
Let, let's, let's go ahead and pass this resolution, 'cause it will save the township tax dollars and, um-
Yeah, let's read this resolution, and it'll save us tax dollars.
Well said, Ford.
Yeah.
Uh, it's Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero five-two, it's a resolution authorizing a contract to participate in the ODOT twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, winter road salt program, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and authorizes the township's road department to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation to participate in a winter twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter salt program to purchase one hundred and fifty tons of road salt. And I actually have two documents to be signed, there's an actual resolution, and then there's an actual agreement with, um, ODOT.
Um, so moved as the resolution's written, um, I would ask if there's any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a second. I will second. Ma'am, will you give us a roll call?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so I want to discuss this, because it falls under James' pre-. Okay, hang on just one second, if you would, you know, I, I, Bob, Rep. Dave, I, it, it's not, you know, this man's got way too much on his plate now, and, and that, that's why we're asking the department heads, and you guys got the information. You should be doing your resolutions and getting them ready, and that's why we're going to that direction, I don't know if you've been informed on it or not. But just wanted to touch base with you. Go ahead, Mr. Bublins. Okay, so Steve, can you, uh, reach out in front of you and grab those two pictures that I just passed him? So you know that I've been speaking about stop signs at Ransburg and Jackson for a long time?
Yes, sir.
And the board has discussed about getting something much more substantial. So Jackson is down again, no stop sign. Ransburg is taken down two weeks ago and got put back up, and now it faces south now. So I went out, and this is a, a, uh, stop sign at Hart and Brown Road. Now, do we need, we do not need the top part, but do you see the substantial amount at the bottom? That's concrete. We need something more substantial, something like this, and I understand Jim's gonna say it's D O T or something like that, but I took my time to go around and get these pictures.
Where's this again, Mike?
Brown and Hart Road. And we have to do something, because the, I know what the next thing's gonna be, that these are very expensive. Stop and think how many times we're sending people every two weeks to replace the stop signs at Ransburg and Jackson.
I agree.
And if we put something substantial up there and somebody hits it, they're probably not going to pull away, they're gonna have damage to their car, then we can have their insurance company pay to replace the next sign that needs to be replaced. We gotta stop just playing games, and that's what this is.
I don't understand, I mean, and I've known for years that you've, you've done this, that you brought this to, how does a person run into a stop sign? You're coming up to where you gotta stop, it doesn't say hit me, it says stop.
So, uh, Steve, the reason I made another copy was that you could give one to, uh, Mr. Stevens for me, and so-
I, I get it, John, I don't understand it either.
Some kind of feedback, whether, and you're busy, and I don't like putting stuff on your plate. So if you wanna ask Mr. Stevens to contact me directly, I'm happy to do that, but this was the place to bring it up today, 'cause I need these other two gentlemen to be involved, to get anything done, and I'm just trying to do things right.
I concur with you, because I know we've talked about this, I even one time said, what if we paint stop? As well as put the sign up, paint it on the road, you can't hit the road.
Or put valor, you know, the valor in there. It's got the steel pipes full of concrete or something.
But I agree that it's something substantial, that if you run into it, then-
It's very aggravating when I leave my, um, street every time, I've either got a truck blocking the way, I don't have a stop, you understand what I'm trying to say? And when I campaigned, I told people I was gonna take care of that, and by God, I'm gonna take care of it, so. Okay, moving on, Bobby, you have anything else for us?
No, sir, thank you.
I don't, we already went to the road department, sorry, I lost my, got a correction. Um, Fiscal Department?
Take care.
You have some bills and, um, payroll rest.
Just a couple of motions, and we'll do the motions to approve accounts payable. Uh, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves a motion to approve accounts payable from April the fifth through April the fifteenth in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars, sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. From check number seven zero one nine zero to seven zero two four two, and electronic vouchers five nine six twenty twenty-four to six eight zero twenty twenty-four, and there's exhibits to support the expenditures.
I apologize, ma'am, I'm looking at my, uh, motion to, um, approve payroll as written.
I'm doing accounts payable, sir.
Oh, accounts payable. Okay, 'cause it's, this is must be-
Well, I didn't know that they were in one particular order, I could have started with-
No worries, I just, the numbers didn't-
I, I was looking at the same thing, and-
Okay. That's not Mr. Mazur's. So what number are we looking, it's just, there's no resolution on it?
It's just a motion, that you should have two things that look kind of like this, one's gonna say-
Sure.
Accounts payable at the top, and the other one should say-
I don't believe we have that.
I don't, we don't have that, I don't see it.
Okay, so do you, would you like to, let me-
Could you pass that now, and we can take a moment?
Yes. And then I'll, I'll wait to do the next one.
Okay.
My apologies.
No worries.
Well, you're, you're fine, it's not your problem.
The numbers wasn't matching up, and I'm just-
Accounts payable. We're doing accounts payable.
I'm used to having a paperwork in front of me, but we went to this new thing.
I didn't scan them, sorry, I don't, oh, I maybe got stuck in the scanner, I'm guessing. Cause it just goes through a scanner, so I'm guessing it may have got stuck in.
Yeah, I agree.
So. So I try to use provide the check number list as long as, as long with the total of how we came up with the sixty-six thousand.
Okay, I'm fine.
I'm gonna take a quick look, John, I thought I seen it.
I didn't see anything that jumped out.
If you have any questions?
I was looking at the same numbers, and I'm like-
No, I apologize, so, yeah, I'm thinking, because there, I'm guessing it got stuck in the scanner.
Yeah, the coal being sick yesterday, it was tough for him to try and catch up.
Yes, I'm thinking, if it was in the pile, maybe it got kind of behind something.
It happens. Everyone's okay with it, I'll make a motion, that we accept the motion as it's written?
I would second.
Uh, ma'am, you wanna give us a roll call?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on, so you do have the motion to approve payroll as written, if you can believe you guys all have that one?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve payroll for the period beginning March the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, through April the sixth, twenty twenty-four, paid on April the twelfth of twenty twenty-four, in the amount of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Um, and we do all those A C H, so it's an A C H deposit of electronic vouchers from six one six through six eight to twenty twenty-four. And again, you should have documentation, and on the last page of your, uh, if it came through, uh, you should have a document that looks like this.
Yes.
And at the bottom of that document, even though it's a little small, you can blow up the number, um, and you can get that, that last number of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars will show on that document, even if it's kind of tiny, you can blow it up just a little bit to see it visually.
I have it right here.
And then the last one is the electronic voucher showing each employee what their voucher number was when they got paid.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Um, I would, I would so moved as the motion is written, um, ask if there's any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a second.
All right, we'll second that.
Can you give us a roll call?
Yes, sir. Uh, Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. And that is all that I have, unless you guys have something for this one.
Um, I do not have anything, John, do you have anything? Mike, I don't, no, but-
Great, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, Mr. Mazur, the floor is yours, sir, it looks like you have a few things for normal.
Thanks, Chairman, the first thing I wanna bring up, the, the resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five seven. There are actually gonna be three resolutions that dealt with, um, lucid properties. Uh, but we're in the process of. Trying to contact the lien holders, and homeowners, and property owners. And part of that process is we need to post a notice in the David reporter at least once. Um, so I wanna wait to make sure we have all three properties done at the same time, and then present those back to the board. Um, again, when all three are ready to be, uh, reviewed by the board members.
We don't have five steps.
You probably don't, because it's not, it's on, that's what I was saying, it's on an agenda, but we're not ready to present those.
Okay.
To the board, cause again, I want all three coming with. Uh, the first resolution I have is twenty twenty four dash zero five six, it's a resolution authorize the obligations approved by the township administrator. Between April fifth, twenty twenty four, and April fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Whereas Board of Trustees, a resolution twenty twenty one one thirty, authorizing the township administrator to approve and incur obligations of ten thousand dollars or less. On behalf of the township, in accordance with section five oh seven point one one of the Ohio Revised Code. And whereas pursuant to the provision of section five oh seven point one one A of the Ohio Revised Code. The obligations approved incurred by the township administrator must be subsequently approved by the adoption. Of a formal resolution of the Board of Trustees. Again, it's from the period of April fifth, twenty twenty four, through April fifteenth, twenty twenty four. In the amount of thirty three thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved as the resolution's written. I would ask if there's any discussion. Hearing none, I would ask for a second.
I will second.
Ma'am, will you give us a roll call?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next resolution trustees I have is twenty twenty four dash zero five four, it's a resolution approving eighty hours of injury leave for Troy Hale. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves eighty hours of injury leave. For employee Troy Hale for the period of April seventh, twenty twenty four, through April twentieth, twenty twenty four. For Article twenty four of the Employees' Collective Bargaining Agreement. And just to update you, um, he's been medically cleared to return to full active duty, um, May second, twenty twenty four.
That's great news. Um, all the, all the paperwork in for BWC, the C D fours, everything?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right.
It's all up to date.
With that, with that being said, I would, um, so moved on the, of the resolution's written, I would ask for a discussion. Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a second.
I will second.
Ma'am, will you please give us a roll call?
Mm-hmm. Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five five, it's approving forty eight hours of injury leave for firefighter Eric Pierce. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. That the board approves forty eight hours of injury leave for employee Eric Pierce. For the period of April seventh, twenty twenty four, through April twentieth. Twenty twenty four per Article thirty one of the Employees' Collective Bargaining Agreement. And I have exhibit attached verifying those dates for the trustees.
Is, this is, is that BWC home?
Yes.
You know, paperwork is in on that?
Yes.
I would, uh, move that we accept the resolution as written. And I would ask if there's any discussion. Hearing no discussion, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Ma'am, will you give us a roll call?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five one. It's a resolution approving the purchase of computers for Franklin Township. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and authorizes the purchase of three new computers. In an amount not to exceed forty five hundred dollars. Be it further resolved, that one computer will be paid out of the general fund for its use in the fiscal apartment. And two additional computers will be paid out of the police fund for the use in the police department. All three computers are to replace existing computers that have been deemed obsolete by the IT's, the township's IT consultant.
So moved as the resolution's written, and I'd ask if there's any questions?
Is this, um, have we determined where we're gonna purchase the, uh, purchase?
Yes, sir, go see a quote here from C D W G. Nicole did quite a bit of research, looking at different vendors, and, um, for what the IT consultant recommended. These are the same or comparable computers at a, uh, a little better price.
Okay, I see the I sevens, which is good.
And then, um, so the, I, I heard you say, but the IT company deemed that we had to replace the second one in the police department, evidently.
Yes, we have actually, we have ten computers that are, that the IT consultant considers obsolete. Uh, but these three that we're addressing today are absolutely critical, with Rob and having all the U A N and payable. Um, she needs the memory. Lieutenant Radliff, with all his new redaction software, needs the memory. And then Chief Smith's laptop was actually purchased in seventeen. So he is ready for a, uh, a new laptop. The others, I can come back to the board at a later date, and we can replace those. Other seven, we can do all at once, we're, we can. We can wean them in, so to speak.
So, I guess this might be the David, both of you, so this'll get us to where we can start doing the software redaction now?
Uh, we've been, our, our whole network has been down for over a week over there. Uh, because some critter got up underneath our launcher, to, uh, a line in here. So this entire week, I haven't been able to do anything with our redaction software, so I gotta reach out to them. I have to be online, to be able to get that one, so it'll.
But, but you also needed a new computer.
Yeah.
So I mean, this, we're, we're doing our thing, we're getting there.
We're getting it, you need to.
Cause we've heard that you're way behind.
We are.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure we're moving in the right direction, that's all.
Here we are.
And that's what we're doing, okay. Any other, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Ma'am, will you give us a roll call?
Yes. Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then the last resolution I have for the board is Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five three. It's a resolution approving the acceptance of salary reimbursement from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. That the board approves and authorizes the acceptance of a check in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and eighty four dollars and twenty nine cents. From the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation regarding salary reimbursement to the township for wages paid to injured employees. Be it further resolved, the reimbursement amount is calculated at seventy two percent of the injured employee's regular bi-weekly salary or wage. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on the table. This is a, a new policy that we just, uh, initiated, uh, January one. So, any questions, I'll be happy to, to answer.
No, I'm just excited, I, I, I myself will, I'll say so moved as the resolution's written. I'm so happy to see the money coming back, because for so many years, it was the taxpayers' dollars going out to pay them. Along with us paying BWC, now we're getting reimbursed from BWC, because we're doing it the, the correct way, so. That being said, is there any discussions, any questions for Mister Mazer? Hearing none, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Ma'am, will you give us a roll call?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes. I just heard a J in there.
So you're behind.
Yes.
Thank you, that's okay.
Good thing there wasn't Jason, man.
Would've been all in trouble.
Oh goodness, yes. All right, boy.
Glad my name's Mike.
All right, John, and the last thing I have for you is a follow-up to a discussion we had with the union, the police union in, uh, an executive session. And it had to deal with their, uh, incremental vacation time. And, um, the amount of, uh, vacation hours they can carry from year to year. I've been in conversation with the union attorney. She is waiting for a response from us now. She feels comfortable that what we talked about in the, in the last meeting, that we give them one hour incremental vac, incremental vacation time. And that we allow them until December thirty first of twenty twenty four, to get their vacation in line with the forty hours. Uh, as agreed upon in their collective bargaining agreement. What I need from, I, I just need to make sure you three are in agreement with that, I'll be back with the attorney, and then we can move on to our next, um. Issues with the, with the union.
I want you two to refresh my memory, so we did, no, I, I got everything except for. We did agree to go from the, I wanted the two hours, and we agreed to go to one hour, I just wanna make sure you, if that's what you got.
Uh, uh, yeah, I would.
One hour of time.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, we originally.
Lot of discussion, I'm, my memories, you know, I'm, that's the reason I'm asking the question, so I'm good with it. I just wanted to make sure that that's where we were at.
Yeah, we, we moved it to one hour, just.
The P S.
Yeah, instead of fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you use fifteen minutes, you're using an hour.
Yes.
Understood.
So, yeah, we're good with that, do we need a motion to accept that?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we accept the M U as written. For the leave time, um, what's that called, what's that M U, uh, leave time balances and?
Um, well, you're just changing from what, what we originally agreed upon from two hours to one hour.
Yeah.
And then what we, what was agreed upon with the union attorney, that we're gonna give you December thirty one, twenty twenty four, to get your vacation down to forty hours. I can get you those specific articles in the, um.
No, that's fine, no, no, I was, I don't want you to change anything. So, so, yeah, so moved, I will make a motion that we accept the M U as written, as read by Mister Mazer at this time.
Provided by their attorney.
Yeah, provided by, um, the union and their attorney. I'd ask for a second.
Any discussion?
I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No. Roll call.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else for us?
That's all I have for you, gentlemen, thank you.
And thank you, um, appreciate everything you do for the township, Ben. You sit in a very hot seat, so. Uh, Mister Fleschman, you have anything for us?
Uh, I had the two things, one, we've already talked about the, the bus parking on Ray Avenue, that's been taken care of. The only thing, uh, Mister Mazer and to the board, um, I, I'm, I may have to try to send it from my personal email address, cause I got it. This is pertaining to Houseville three one five. I spent, um, a lot of time this morning, uh, watching it and et cetera. I don't know, it's like, to me, watching someone sell snake oil. I, there's too many questions you can't ask, because you're watching what someone is giving and presenting. But I would like to see if this is something, um, in your opinion, that would be good, it's through the general assembly, assembly at this time, is that not correct, sir?
Yes, it is, it, it, no, it's not in the general assembly, it's in, in committee with general assembly, um. And there, I, I believe it was when you were out sick, we have a, we had a sheet given to us. From OTA that, I'll, I'll see if I can get it, I'll get it to you.
Because.
Yeah, I would like to, I'd like to, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I, I, there's certain things in there that I think are good for the township. Um, but there are things that, as a resident. I wanna protect the residents for, you know, if I'm sitting out there versus sitting here, if I'm not sitting here. Would someone be able to love the taxes without, um, being, and, and these were things that were concerned, and the answer came back, they asked a question two times in a row. And then the, the lady came, the state house representative came back, and said, so if somebody was building something. Um, and they wanted to be able to get a two percent. In order to do it, it eventually would be coming from the taxpayers' dollars to build that particular, whatever it is, and the answer came back, yes.
Two percent.
Whatever we would raise the tax, tax abatement.
I don't think the township would have the authority to tax it.
But under, under this, you would. That's where I'm against it, because we, in my opinion, as a board, should never have the ability to tax the people without it going to a vote.
There's a, there's a lot going on in this.
I'd have to look at that, I, I can't recall seeing the.
I'll send over the video when you have a chance.
It's on OTA's website.
Yeah, but I mean, I can get, I'll shrink it down to where all it has to click, you don't have to watch everything, cause that took forever to get to that point.
But there is a, um, there is a, a, a thing put out from OTA, talking points that, um, I'll make sure you get a copy of it.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about that, and of course, we may not be able to stop it because of, you know, it's out of our hands, it's, it's to the next level above us. But that was concerning to me as a resident and as a trustee. That in the near future, my kids or their kids, um, would have to pick up the cost of something, um, that the public wouldn't have a say in it.
Oh, you mean abatements?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Abatements, yeah.
So, that's something that is disturbing to me, um, when I read that, because. You can get good trustees, you can get good senators, you can get good presidents, say what you want, but I think it always should be a collective. When the people speak, and they cast their ballot, and this is how they want it to go, I'm fine with that, then I do what they ask. So, I'll leave it at that, sir.
I, I am reading with Michelle Reynolds on this very spot.
Okay.
I can discuss this in an executive session with you, but.
Okay.
Um, that's the only thing I have, um, I would like to see Mister Ratliff afterwards, I need to discuss something with him. Um, Mister Bublins, you have anything?
Steve, I just wanted to ask you, when do we have to determine the rest of the A R P funds? For that to be turned in, like, there were, you explained to me about, you have to designate where the, so what is the drop dead date on that?
December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Oh, so we don't have to decide till then?
We just did, we kinda did our catch up, and, and thank God for Nicole, she had to navigate a lot of things, and a lot of things fixed for us to enter our latest. A R P A fund, what we've expanded. Uh, so now, we have until December thirty one, twenty twenty four, to appropriate, designate how we're using three million funds.
I thought it was sooner than that.
Um, but you're, no, you're right, we had to get to one report done by April thirty. So, we got that in and completed.
All right. Anything else, Mike? That's it, sir, all right, meeting's adjourned.